Today, we come together to honour not only a colleague and a leader, but a tireless champion of the inter-American ideal. Someone whose dedication, integrity and vision have left an enduring mark on this organisation. For nearly a decade, you have served as Assistant Secretary General of the OAS with distinction, earning the deep respect and admiration of all who have had the privilege to work alongside you. Since assuming office in July 2015 and then being unanimously re-elected in 2020, Ambassador Mendez has dedicated himself with unwavering commitment to the mission of the OAS and to the values we collectively defend. His leadership has helped guide the organisation through a time of profound transformation internally and externally. As Secretary of the Permanent Council, he was often the quiet force behind the scene, advising, coordinating and preparing with precision. Those of us who have had the occasion to chair this council know how critical that guidance has been. His instinct for diplomacy, his capacity to foresee and navigate tensions and his deep understanding of our hemisphere's political diversity made him a reliable and trusted partner to all. An essential part of Ambassador Mendez's legacy lies in his leadership in organising some of the organisation's most significant moments. Over his tenure, he coordinated and oversaw ten regular sessions of the General Assembly, including two held entirely virtually due to the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as five special sessions of the General Assembly. These complex, high-stakes undertakings required not only logical expertise, but also the ability to navigate evolving political landscapes with tact and agility. From Santo Domingo in 2016 to St John's just a few weeks ago, and through these unique challenges of the 2020 and 2021 virtual sessions, his steady hand ensured the success of each event. But Ambassador Mendez did more than manage, he modernised. Faced with the unprecedented disruption of the COVID-19 pandemic, he led the OAS into the digital era. When physical meetings were no longer possible, he and his team made virtual diplomacy not only viable but effective, often setting the standards for other regional organisations. His innovation went further. Under his leadership, the organisation undertook important efforts to modernise its internal processes and documentation systems with a clear focus on enhancing transparency, efficiency and institutional accountability. These were not merely administrative improvements. They represent meaningful structural advancement that will strengthen the organisation's operations for years to come. Ambassador Mendez has also been a tireless advocate for inclusive development. Through his leadership, the OAS became a platform for recognising the heritage struggles and contributions of marginalised communities. From the institutionalisation of Black History Month, in the Inter-American Weeks for People of African Descent and Indigenous Peoples, he has elevated important conversations into concrete action. He has reminded us that equity is not just a principle, it must be practiced. Within his office, he led by example, promoting gender parity, maintaining an open-door policy and fostering a work environment built on trust and collaboration. His message for member states was simple and sincere: "You elected me and I will always be here for you." And he was. We also recognise his work as a facilitator of partnerships, be it his collaboration with the Pan American Development Foundation, his co-chairing of Health and Disaster Response Committees, or his innovative coordination with humanitarian actors to bring support to vulnerable communities in Haiti. He saw beyond the limitations of bureaucracy and found practical ways to deliver results. Importantly, Ambassador Mendez has been a champion of youth. His support to the young Americas Business Trust and his constant engagement with students and young leaders reflect his belief that the future of our region depends on the empowerment, education and entrepreneurship of our youth. He helped ensure that the voices were heard and valued. Ambassador Mendez also played a key role in strengthening inter-institutional cooperation within the inter-American system, particularly through his close collaboration with the Pan American Health Organisation. As co-chair of two high-level committees focused on mental health and primary care, he helped to elevate critical public health issues on the hemispheric agenda. His efforts promoted a more coordinated response to shared challenges and underscored the value of aligning political dialogue with technical expertise. Through his collaboration, he reinforced the importance of placing human wellbeing and public health all at the centre of regional development. Dear Ambassador Mendez, your tenure has been marked by dedicated service, innovative leadership and genuine empathy. You have worked not for personal recognition, but to strengthen the very fabric of this institution and to advance the wellbeing of the people it serves. You have shown us that leadership can be both firm and principled, while also kind and inclusive. As you embark on the next chapter beyond this role, we thank you sincerely for your dedication, the partnerships you have forged and the enduring legacy of integrity and progress you leave behind. We would also like to acknowledge the important role your family has played in supporting you through this journey. To your wife Elvira and your children, Kiara and Awar, who have been with you, strengthening every step of the way, we offer our warmest regards. And to your mother, Genova, whose patience and prayers have always fortified you, we send our heartfelt appreciation. In addition, we extend our deepest gratitude to all your colleagues in the Assistant Secretary General's Executive Office, the Office of the Permanent Council and the General Assembly, the Department of Conferences and Meetings Management, as well as the entire staff of the OAS General Secretariat and the network of the OAS national offices. Their dedication to hard work have been vital to the success of your tenure. On behalf of the Permanent Council and with the highest appreciation, we wish you continued success, good health and fulfilment in your future endeavours. Wherever your path takes you, may you continue to be a voice of unity, dignity and justice. Thank you, Ambassador. It is now my pleasure to extend a warm greeting and offer the floor to Mr Albert Ramden, Secretary General of the Organisation of American States. Mrs Secretary General, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr Chair, Distinguished Ambassador Steve Farrow, Permanent Representative of Dominica, Congress relations on assumption of this duty, distinguished Permanent Representatives of Member States, distinguished Permanent Observers, Mrs Elvira Mendez, family and friends of Ambassador Nestor Mendez, specially invited guests, ladies and gentlemen. Dear Ambassador Nestor Mendez, Assistant Secretary General of the Organisation of American States. As we gather today, and this happens every ten years, more or less, to mark the conclusion of a decade of dedicated service by Ambassador Nestor Mendez as Assistant Secretary General of the Organisation of American States, it is both a privilege and an honour to pay tribute to a leader whose commitment to the organisation, to this institution and also to the peoples of the Americas has been nothing short of remarkable. Today, we will bid farewell not just to a colleague, but to a steadfast hemispheric champion, advocate and a cherished friend. Ambassador Mendez's journey through the inter-American system has been defined by very important principles and values: integrity, sense of purpose and an enduring impact because of that. From his early days representing Belize as a delegate, and I had the pleasure to work with him during that period, to his historic tenure as the first Belizean to hold the post of Assistant Secretary General, he has brought to every role a clear vision, an unwavering dedication and a deep moral compass. These are important skill sets to survive successfully in a multilateral hemispheric organisation. Since assuming office in July 2015 and again upon his unanimous reelection in 2020, Ambassador Mendez has exemplified what it means to lead. He brought not only the seasoned wisdom of a diplomat, but the heart of a public servant, a hemispheric public servant. One who listens with purpose, acts decisively, takes responsibility and believes that multilateralism must serve the real needs of the people. Whether navigating the deliberations of the council or supporting member states, through sensitive moments, his leadership has been measured, thoughtful and principled. Importantly, Ambassador Mendez expanded the moral footprint of this organisation. Under his guidance, the OAS became more inclusive. The Chair already mentioned raising the voices of youth, of indigenous people, Afro-descendants and communities too often left on the margins of the workings of this organisation. And I commit, as Secretary General, that these initiatives will continue. So Ambassador, you're leaving clearly a legacy in this regard. For Nestor Mendez, in my own view and my own experience, inclusion was and is not simply a rhetorical goal. It was a practice, woven into the daily work of his own acts, but also in this institution. And this is a very important message to the whole membership. When we speak about a hemispheric institution, inclusion, respect must be valued and carried out. Over the past year, Ambassador Mendez remained calm, which is very important to remain calm under these stressful situations. Determined leadership helped the OAS navigate periods of change, challenge and opportunity. He led with both wisdom and empathy, uniting member states around shared solutions grounded in core principles of dialogue, cooperation and mutual respect. His tenure saw not only the successful organisation of the many OAS General Assemblies, including during the unprecedented disruption because of COVID-19. And I must say, in that moment, he did not see a problem, but he saw an opportunity to innovate and that led to the continuation of the political dialogue in this organisation. He championed the digital transformation of key institutional processes, ensuring that diplomacy not only continued, but it also evolved. He reminded us that modernisation is not only about tools, but about access, transparency and institutional resilience. And perhaps most enduring of all is the spirit of constructive engagement he brought to this House of the Americas. Ambassador Mendez believed in building trust, nurturing relationships and partnerships and seeking common ground even amid difference. That spirit will remain part of his lasting legacy. So, ladies and gentlemen, those of us who were fortunate enough to work closely with Ambassador Mendez know well his exceptional service and character. His leadership reflects the highest ideals of public service. Belize and indeed all the Americas and the Caribbean can take pride in the example he has set. As we say farewell, we do more than closing a chapter, we celebrate one. Ambassador Mendez leaves behind not just achievements, but inspiration to work on and to go by. He has shown us how ethical, courageous and humble leadership can shape institutions' lives. To his colleagues, he has been a wise advisor; to the staff, a supportive and trusted leader; and to many around this table, a true partner in the ongoing work of hemispheric cooperation. And of course, he must get inspiration from somewhere. So, at this point, I would like to acknowledge the unwavering support of his family, the home base, his wife Elvira, their children Kiara and Anwar, and his mother Genoviva. Your quiet strength and constant encouragement have been the foundation of his success. So, on behalf of the organisation, of the entire organisation, I want to thank you for sharing him with us for long hours away from home during this tenure. I also extend our appreciation, as the Chair has done, to the team that worked with in the Executive Office of the Assistant Secretary General, the Office of the General Assembly and the Permanent Council, the Department of Conferences and Meetings Management and all the staff of the General Secretariat and also the national offices. Ambassador Mendez's legacy is also reflected in their collective work. As this chapter comes to a close, Ambassador Nestor, know that your legacy will continue to shape the OAS for years to come. On behalf of the organisation and all of us who have had the honour of working with you, thank you for your service, your principles and your unwavering belief in the promise of the Americas. May your next steps bring fulfillment and may your voice continue to advance a noble cause of hemispheric unity and progress. And I can tell you, you will leave the OAS, the OAS will never leave you. Because once a member of the OAS family, you remain a lifelong member of the Americas. Thank you very much and I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Secretary General, for these timely remarks. I now invite the delegations to take the floor and share the remarks as we bid farewell to Ambassador Nestor Mendez, Assistant Secretary General of the Organisation of American States. The floor is now open for interventions. Belize, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Mr SG, Nestor. This is... It's a little sad to see you go, but it's still a proud moment for us. And on behalf of the Government of Belize and on a personal note, as a colleague and a friend, I want to extend our warmest congratulations and deepest appreciation as Ambassador Mendez concludes his exceptional tenure as Assistant Secretary General of this prestigious organisation. Ambassador Mendez's remarkable journey from the Belize Foreign Service to his historic election in 2015 as the first Belizean to serve as Assistant Secretary General has been a source of immense national pride and regional admiration. Over the past decade, he has brought the OAS a spirit of energy, innovation and inclusivity. He has championed the rights of youth, women and marginalised communities while boldly advocating for climate resilience, democratic renewal and institutional modernisation. His leadership has been transformative, rooted in a deep commitment to the core values of the inter-American system. As a bridge builder across the Americas, Ambassador Mendez was tireless in his efforts to amplify the voices of small and vulnerable states. He consistently highlighted the disproportionate impacts of climate change and natural disasters on our region and promoted sustainable development through digital transformation and regional connectivity. Under his stewardship, the OAS renewed its focus on partnership for development, meaningful dialogue and institutional reform. Given his deep understanding of both the Caribbean and Central America, Ambassador Mendez was particularly effective in advancing the shared priorities of CARICOM and SICA, two regional groupings to which Belize proudly belongs. His advocacy ensured that the perspectives and needs of small and developing states received due attention and respect within the OAS. But on a personal level, I want to express my sincere gratitude for the support and guidance that Ambassador Mendez so generously extended to me as I began my own journey as Belize's ambassador in Washington. As someone entering the diplomatic arena in this capacity for the first time, I could not have asked for a more gracious, experienced and supportive mentor. His insights, calm demeanor and constant encouragement made all the difference and for that, I remain profoundly grateful. That said, following in Ambassador Mendez's footsteps has not been an easy task. The bar he set in diplomacy, leadership and yes, in hospitality is exceptionally high. In fact, I suspect many of us will struggle most with the absence of those legendary receptions that is whom. Where Nestor and his wonderful wife Elvira welcomed us with warmth, generosity and no small measure of flair. Nestor in particular revealed himself to be a master mixologist. That's a talent that we will all very much miss. But as he closes this remarkable chapter, we celebrate a legacy defined by service, substance and sincerity. Belize is deeply proud of all that Nestor has accomplished. And we feel the inter-American system is undeniably stronger and more inclusive thanks to his vision and his leadership. Ambassador, we thank you for your friendship, your example and your unwavering commitment to the betterment of our hemisphere. You will be missed, but certainly not forgotten. And I have no doubt our paths will continue to cross, hopefully over one of those unforgettable cocktails at Casa Mendez. Thank you for a job well done.
Thank you, Ambassador, for your contribution. I now invite Saint Vincent and the Grenadines to take the floor. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, you have just invited thirty-two beautiful islands and keys to take the floor and we thank you for that. Chair of the Permanent Council, Permanent and Alternate Representatives, Permanent Observers, Secretary General, Assistant Secretary General, Mrs Elvira Mendez and family, staff of the Secretariat, good morning. Chair, the delegation of Saint Vincent and the Grenadines takes this opportunity to express its deep gratitude to Ambassador Nestor Mendez, even as we bid him a fond farewell upon the conclusion of a decade of distinguished service as Assistant Secretary General of the Organisation of American States. Neither statuesque nor colossal in size, Ambassador Mendez, a national of Belize, straddled the expansive regions of the Caribbean and Central America like a colossus and through his diplomatic acumen and his ability to build bridges and build consensus through the facilitation of dialogue, brought diverse peoples and cultures together with the common goal of enhancing the life chances of all peoples of our Americas. Assistant Secretary General Mendez has used his remarkable diplomatic skills and knowledge to enrich the services of this organisation to address the multi-dimensional challenges experienced by member states in the 21st century. SG Mendez, among the distinctive elements of your work in the post, we count your invaluable interventions during the special meetings of the Committee on Hemispheric Security on the Special Security Concerns of the Small Island and Low-Lying Coastal Developments Developing States of the Caribbean, in which you advanced an understanding that our hemisphere can indeed, through concerted joint efforts, resolve its crises, be peaceful and remain united. Yet another facet of your legacy is the demonstration of your calm fighting spirit in the staging of the Inter-American Week for Indigenous Peoples and for people of African descent. These platforms showcased the cultural and artistic expressions of our culture and identity and raised awareness of our economic, social, cultural, environmental and religious rights and of the various challenges encountered by these populations. This formed part of your mission to promote human rights through the full participation and empowerment of all people in life in the hemisphere to enjoy their full enjoyment of such life. In your second inaugural address, Ambassador Mendez, you indicated your objective of finalising a teacher exchange programme at the kindergarten level called Idiomas Como Puentes for the Caribbean to become bilingual in order to promote its competitiveness. My delegation hopes that this initiative will remain on the agenda of the Office of the Assistant Secretary General and will come to fruition as this is also an important aspect of empowering the youth and the next generation. Chair, Saint Vincent and the Grenadines takes this opportunity also to extend appreciation to Assistant Secretary General Mendez and to recognise his work in promoting diplomatic engagement when he led an official visit to Saint Vincent and the Grenadines in 2023 and attended the celebrations to mark the forty-fourth anniversary of independence following the protocolary address of the Honourable Prime Minister Dr Ralph E. Goncalves, who served at the time as pro-tempore president of the SILAC. Assistant Secretary General Mendez, we congratulate you on your tenure and thank you for your contribution to improving the effectiveness and functioning of the OAS. We thank you for leading a remarkable We thank you for leading a remarkable team in your office, and here express our gratitude to the members of that team for their unstinting work and devotion to the ideals of the American spirit. We will remember your legacy of transformative leadership, your embodiment of the ideals of diplomacy, and your ability to bridge the divides in this diverse hemisphere and to promote inclusion. Indeed, as a hemispheric public servant, you embody the spirit of the Organization of American States and bring to life the vision of its predecessor, the Pan-American Union. You operated with transparency, with the ultimate objective of fostering democratic values, inclusion, peace, and prosperity in the hemisphere, always with humility and with respect for sovereignty, always with an open door. On behalf of the government of Saint Vincent and the Grenadines, the Alternate Representatives and staff at the permanent mission of Saint Vincent and the Grenadines... If I have exceeded my time, I apologize. I express gratitude to you, ASG Mendez, success in the future, a clear bright pathway towards the future of continued service to your hemisphere and to your country. May you, Mrs. Mendez, and your dear family be the beneficiaries of multiple and continued blessings. I thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ambassador. I now offer the floor to the delegation of El Salvador. Flora is yours.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente. Mi delegación agradece la celebración de esta sesión extraordinaria como un merecido reconocimiento a la labor que el embajador Mendez, secretario general adjunto, ha realizado durante estos diez años. Nuestro profundo agradecimiento por su aporte a favor del fortalecimiento de nuestra organización. Mi país reconoce que durante su gestión ha promovido de manera incansable el diálogo firme pero respetuoso. Nos deja un valioso legado y ejemplo de la diplomacia que tiende puentes para encontrar soluciones comunes aún en los momentos más complejos que hemos enfrentado en la región. Hoy, estimado embajador Mendez, consideramos oportuno recordarlo expresado en el 2015 durante su discurso de toma de posesión cuando nos dijo: "Puede que nunca haya unanimidad ideológica en esta OEA. Sin embargo, lo importante no es la uniformidad de pensamiento sino la búsqueda de entendimientos y la construcción de objetivos comunes a través de la discusión respetuosa sobre los diferentes temas con el claro propósito de construir sobre nuestros puntos de convergencia y no sobre nuestras divergencias." Y usted, con su servicio ejemplar, ha sabido representar día a día en su gestión ese compromiso conciliador acorde a los valores interamericanos. No menos relevante ha sido su respaldo promoviendo incesantes actividades culturales, conmemoraciones interamericanas, y el constante apoyo a la juventud a través de actividades académicas y el modelo de Asamblea General de la OEA que cultivan la identidad de nuestros pueblos y estrechan los lazos diplomáticos de nuestros estados. Apreciado embajador Mendez, al despedirlo reconocemos con certeza su liderazgo sereno, cercano, y profundamente humano, a un diplomático de altura, pero en especial damos cuenta de su gran calidad humana. Usted deja una huella indeleble con su trabajo y esfuerzo, pero sobre todo con su servicio comprometido con los valores de nuestra organización. Desde El Salvador agradecemos su cercanía como hermano centroamericano y disposición constante de apoyo a nuestro país. Le auguramos muchos éxitos en esta nueva etapa. Estamos seguros que seguirá contribuyendo desde otros espacios al fortalecimiento del diálogo, la paz, y cooperación de nuestro hemisferio. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, El Salvador. I now offer the floor to the delegation of Grenada.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Saluting you on the assumption of this role, distinguished colleagues, representatives, alternate representatives, observers, Secretary General Ramdin, guests, family, Assistant Secretary General Mendez. It falls to me, your humble servant, to say farewell to thee, and as I do so, I acknowledge the consistently warm relations that have defined our delegation's engagement with your office, Mr. Assistant Secretary General. From the days of Ambassador Angus Friday's leadership, through my immediate predecessor, Ambassador Smith, who, as we know, became a trusted member of your cabinet, our bond has always been one of mutual respect and warmth. During your significant time in office, the OAS, or hemisphere, and the world indeed, have faced many challenges and fundamental changes, from the increasing climate events that so painfully impact our member states to complex migration patterns across our borders. Your leadership has been a steady guide. Facing these issues, your firm commitment to this focused interventions along the lines of this organization's core principles of democracy, human rights, security, and integral development has been both encouraging and reassuring. We in Grenada particularly appreciate your consistent help in communication with our OAS internal bodies and representatives. This dedication to fostering collaboration and ensuring that collaboration is fostered within our own organization has been invaluable. We have also admired your tireless work in strengthening relations with our external partners, making the OAS's values and efforts more visible and accessible to citizens across this diverse hemisphere. Furthermore, your tested efforts to achieve more rights for more people across various areas, from human security and defense to gender equity, have clearly shown the importance of our organization through the organization's thorough approach to human rights. Your competitiveness, your comprehensive and inclusive approach is one we must continue to uphold. Mr. Assistant Secretary General, we still call you. Grenada is incredibly proud of your excellent work in this vital role, and I believe this sentiment is shared by the notably smaller member states of our sub-region, the OECD S, the Organization of Eastern Caribbean States. You have highlighted the capacity and contribution of Caribbean leadership on the hemispheric stage of which we are surely proud. You have given life to the belief that our region is a clear example of the larger issues faced by member states across the hemisphere and the capacity that exists within to resolve, to address, to bring to a new life. You've consistently testified that we, more than most, suffered a brunt of severe storms and extreme weather events caused by climate change, and it's a harsh reality that our people face every year. And every year of your tenure, you have been with us on this. Being a Central American son as well, you've often reminded us that we also serve as the crucial link between North and South America, and in this position, we deal dearly with the challenges of things like illicit crime and trafficking between these two larger continents. That we witness firsthand, the change in migration patterns in the region, you continuously showed us we have a role to play in the benefit of our work in the OAS towards resolution of poverty and the like. And in that, we are, we are mayor of nations and territories that are deeply affected by the lasting impacts of colonialism, and its many human rights abuses and conflicts were part of your discourse to us. It is precisely because of this unique position that we especially commend your leadership. You brought not only a well-informed Caribbean perspective to the role of Assistant Secretary General, but in doing so, you offered a truly complete hemispheric understanding of the challenges we all face, and importantly, the practical solutions that are needed to address them. We applaud your diligent efforts to advance, in your words, the imperative of sustainable development. This philosophy is absolutely vital for improving the quality of life of our people sustainably and healthily, and for protecting them from environmental changes. Your legacy, Mr. Assistant Secretary General Nestor Mendez, illuminates... As you step to the new page, we in Grenada extend our most sincere appreciation for your outstanding service to the people of the Americas. We wish you, Nestor Mendez, your family, continued success and great fulfillment in all your future endeavors. Your legacy illuminates the path forward, and we as member states honor you by deepening our cooperation, amplifying our shared responsibility, and tirelessly pursuing the vision of a more just, inclusive, and secure hemisphere for all peoples. I thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Obviously, we got so much more to say to our dear colleague. I appreciate and thank you for your patience and your promise.
Thank you, Grenada. I now offer the floor to the delegation of Panama.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente. En nombre de la Delegación de la República de Panamá, es un honor participar en esta sesión extraordinaria del Consejo Permanente para rendir homenaje al secretario general adjunto, embajador Nestor Mendez, en el cierre de su destacada trayectoria de diez años al frente de esta organización. Desde que asumió sus funciones el 13 de julio del 2015 y tras su reelección por unanimidad el 20 de marzo del 2020, el embajador Mendez ha sido responsable de la secretaría, del Consejo Permanente, y de sus órganos subsidiarios. Durante este periodo, su gestión contribuyó a la eficiencia de estos espacios de deliberación política. A lo largo de su gestión, el embajador Mendez promovió activamente iniciativas que fortalecen el liderazgo juvenil. Su oficina fue clave en el desarrollo y expansión del modelo de Asamblea General de la OEA para estudiantes de secundaria y universidad, una plataforma que ha permitido a miles de jóvenes simular negociaciones internacionales y adquirir habilidades diplomáticas. Más allá de la MOEA, impulsó el Foro de Jóvenes de las Américas y el Fondo de Jóvenes Empresarios y el programa TIC Américas, entre otros espacios que han empoderado a las nuevas generaciones hacia la participación democrática. Asimismo, bajo su liderazgo destacan dos semanas interamericanas emblemáticas que permitieron visibilizar derechos, cultura, y desafíos de comunidades históricamente marginadas: la Semana Interamericana de los Pueblos Indígenas y la Semana Interamericana para las y los afrodescendientes. Estos espacios impulsaron el diálogo sobre justicia racial, preservación cultural, e inclusión social. Su compromiso con la resiliencia y el cambio climático también han sido constante, integrando la incorporación del medio ambiente en la agenda de la OEA y apoyando acciones concretas frente a desastres naturales. Para Panamá, el acompañamiento del embajador Mendez fue cercano y constante. En cada presidencia del Consejo Permanente y comisiones que dirigimos, su disposición, asesoría experta y amabilidad profesional fueron un apoyo valiosísimo. Siempre escuchó con atención nuestras iniciativas y brindó orientación eficaz paso a paso, demostrando esa accesibilidad inigualable, característica de su liderazgo equilibrado, firme, e inclusivo. Embajador Mendez, queremos agradecer también a su equipo, especialmente a la embajadora La Celia Prince, jefa de gabinete, así como a todas las personas que han sido parte de su oficina durante esta década, a quienes hoy continúan y a quienes pasaron por su equipo. Gracias por su respaldo constante, por el trabajo silencioso, y por garantizar el buen funcionamiento técnico de esta secretaría. Embajador Mendez, le agradecemos profundamente su dedicación, su apego a los valores democráticos, y su visión de una OEA más moderna y cercana a la gente. Su gestión ejecutada con profesionalismo e inspiración deja un legado que seguirá marcando el rumbo de nuestra organización. Panamá le desea éxito en sus futuros desafíos, con plena confianza de que seguirá siendo un referente del liderazgo y del servicio regional. Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you, delegation of Panama. Next, we offer the floor to the delegation of Canada.
Merci, monsieur président. Chair, Secretary General Adjunto Mendez. Au nom du gouvernement du Canada, du peuple canadien, et de notre mission permanente, c'est une honneur d'être ici aujourd'hui pour rendre hommage à vos acclamismes durant votre mandat en tant que Secrétaire Général Adjoint de l'OEA. Nous aimerions tout d'abord vous remercier pour votre dévoûtement et pour vos contributions précieuses envers de nos objectifs communs, visant notamment la promotion des droits de la personne dans les Amériques, en particulier ceux des groupes marginalisés et vulnérables, ainsi que l'égalité entre les sexes. Depuis le début de votre mandat en 2015, dans le cadre des fonctions que vous menez au cœur même du Secrétaire Général, vous avez travaillé sans relâche à rassembler et à mener des multiples rencontres et débarrassions de plus importants et fructuants.
Assistant Secretary General, your work to address the many challenges facing our continent has been commendable. We are thankful for your proactive engagement on critical issues such as climate change and natural disaster resilience across the Americas. Your dedicated work over the years to advocate for women's rights, gender equality, the rights of Afro-descendants, and indigenous peoples demonstrate your remarkable commitment to human rights and inclusion. You have consistently highlighted the role also of national offices that they can play in supporting the overall objectives of the OAS. Nestor, we are delighted to have had the opportunity to work together and to have developed a close collaboration in all these areas that are so dear to us. We have so appreciated your leadership style, your openness, your composed and approachable demeanor, all of which has contributed significantly to fostering a welcoming and collaborative environment. We would also like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the entire office of the ASG, whose efforts, often behind the scenes, are crucial to the successful daily operations of the OAS. In particular, their role in facilitating and supporting critical meetings cannot be overstated. Ambassador Mendez, we are truly grateful to have walked alongside this journey with you, united by our common values. Canada extends a heartfelt thanks for your inspiring leadership, your steadfast dedication, your bold commitment to the advancement of the OAS. We wish you continued success in all of your endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, delegation of Canada. The floor now goes to the delegation of Brazil.
Brigado, señor presidente. Brasil rende hoy una homenaje sincera al embajador Nestor Mendez, que concluye su mandato como secretario general adjunto de la Organización de los Estados Americanos, após una década de dedicação ao multilateralismo hemisférico. Embajador Mendez siempre encarnó las cualidades de un grande diplomata: sólida formación académica, trayectoria profesional respetable, y compromiso inquestionable con los valores del sistema interamericano. En el ejercicio de sus funciones, destacó su de forma aún más expresiva, convirtiéndose en una referencia de equilibrio, diálogo, y entendimiento en la región. Durante el periodo de profunda incertidumbre traída por la pandemia de COVID-19, cobr el embajador Mendez conducir con competencia y senso de responsabilidad la transición que permitió a OEA a mantenerse operacional y relevante. Su trabajo aseguró la continuidad de los procesos institucionales y preservó espacios esenciales de diálogo cuando la cooperación multilateral se mostraba más necesaria que nunca. Destaco aún su actitud firme y discreta como secretario del Consejo Permanente, apoyado por toda su equipo competente. Como pude personalmente testimoniar durante mi periodo reciente de la presidencia del Consejo, de abril a junio de este año, el embajador Mendez ejerció esta función con seriedad, equilibrio, y notable capacidad de construir pontes entre posiciones diversas, ayudando a garantizar fluidez de los trabajos y la preservación del ambiente de respeto mútuo. También merece registro el papel decisivo del embajador Mendez en la implementación de las decisiones que instituían la celebración anual de la Semana Interamericana de los Pueblos Indígenos y de la Semana Interamericana de las Personas Afrodescendientes. Para el Brasil, estas iniciativas poseen un significado especial para reafirmar el compromiso de la organización con la valorización de la diversidad cultural, la superación de todas las formas de discriminación, y la promoción de los derechos de las comunidades históricamente marginalizadas. Reitero aún que el embajador Mendez desempeñó... Reitero aún que el embajador Méndez desempeñó con excelencia y lealdad todas las atribuciones institucionales que caben al secretario general adjunto, como reconocido durante las justas homenajes que le fueron dirigidas durante el 55º periodo ordinario de sesiones de Asamblea General en Antigua y Barbuda. Al embajador Méndez, el Brasil manifesta no apenas gratidón, pero reconocimiento por el ejemplo de servicio público y dedicación al bien común. Su legado continuará a inspirar a todos los que acreditan en la fuerza del diálogo y en la relevancia del multilateralismo para nuestra región. Deseamos al embajador Méndez y a su familia salud, felicidades y éxito en la nueva etapa de su vida. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, ambassador. We now offer the floor to the delegation of the Dominican Republic.
Señor presidente, señor secretario general, señor secretario general adjunto, señora Elvira Méndez, Kiara y Anuar, colegas. Es un honor para mí sumarme a las palabras de despedida al embajador Nestor Méndez, quien por una década ha ocupado el cargo de secretario general adjunto de la OEA, desempeñando sus funciones con un alto sentido de responsabilidad, compromiso y profesionalismo. El embajador Méndez siempre se ha distinguido por su firme vocación multilateralista, la cual se ha visto fortalecida a través de su larga experiencia diplomática. Su accionar dentro de la organización siempre se caracterizó por mantener una relación cercana con los Estados miembros, ser un constructor de puentes y procurar los más altos estándares en el funcionamiento del Consejo Permanente en su calidad de secretario del mismo. Conozco a Nestor Méndez por muchos años, desde que ambos coincidimos como delegados alternos de nuestros respectivos países. He visto cómo ha representado dignamente a su nación como representante alterno y como representante permanente, y también cómo ha cumplido a cabalidad con el mandato que se le otorgó al momento que los Estados miembros de la organización lo eligieron para ser el secretario general adjunto de esta última década. Embajador Méndez, gracias por estos años de servicio, por el legado que deja la OEA, que sin duda ha sido de importantes aportes a este Consejo Permanente, al funcionamiento de las oficinas nacionales y a los más vulnerables de la región, a quienes se encargó usted de dar visibilidad a través de las actividades que de estas oficinas se organizaron. Aprovecho esta ocasión para expresarles mis parabienes en el futuro que hoy se inicia y que junto a su familia, con la que he tenido la oportunidad de compartir muy de cerca, disfruten cada día de esta nueva etapa. Todo lo mejor, champion. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, ambassador. Next, we offer the floor to the delegation of Antigua and Barbuda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, I apologize for the absence of Ambassador Sanders, who unfortunately now has COVID. Ambassador Méndez, though, I understand that he has conveyed to you privately the high regard in which you are held by the delegation of Antigua and Barbuda, and I quote how your sound advice contributed to the smooth work of the council and for clarity of issues that might otherwise have been inflamed by opposing positions of member states. So here and now, I would simply reiterate my government's profound appreciation to you for your years of service in general and particularly for your stewardship of the General Assembly that we just hosted. It was an honor to have worked with you and we wish you all the very best. Thank you.
Thank you, delegation of Antigua and Barbuda. Next, we offer the floor to the delegation of San Keith and Neves.
Thank you, Chair. Honorable Secretary General Ramdin, and for the final official time, honorable Assistant Secretary General Mendez, members of the General Secretariat, excellent permanent interim and alternate representatives, permanent observers, proud family members and other distinguished guests, everyone. My delegation is deeply honored to be able to pay tribute to an individual who has served this organization with distinction. However, his exemplary service, Chair, is probably an inevitable extension of the man who is Nestor Mendez. When, as a representative of San Keith and Neves in a different capacity, I first met Ambassador Mendez, probably in the summer of 2011 or 2012 also, my initial impression was that this young man, the permanent representative of Belize to the OAS, is an accomplished embodiment of unpretentiousness, completely down-to-earth, with a ubiquitous sense of humor. Probably, we exchanged hellos one or two times after that, but the next time we shook hands, or rather fist bumped, Nestor Mendez was the Assistant Secretary General of the Organization of American States. Nonetheless, his humility sustained, grounded in the deep sense of purpose and conviction that I later found out was developed over years of dedicated service that defined an illustrious diplomatic career in Guatemala, the United Kingdom, the United States of America and Canada. Small wonder, he was so fit for purpose for this assignment as he exemplified the qualities that prove that strength in leadership is most effectively predicated on personal bonds of friendship, earned respect and ultimate trust. This, coupled with the willingness to devote the necessary time and effort to working hard at the task, compared his team, his secretariat, led by his chief of staff, La Celia Prince, to emulate his posture and deliver beyond expectations to the benefit of all delegations, to the benefit of this organization, to the benefit of the hemisphere at large. How then, Chair, and colleagues, could ASG Nestor Mendez's efforts by osmosis or diffusion not have influenced the entire world? Naturally, his reelection was unanimous. So, Chair, San Keith and Neves joins with all the other delegations in wishing ASG all the best as he closes this phase of his life and he moves forward to realize whatever subsequent aspirations and endeavors on which he sets his sights. May he continue to prove that a smile and a good sense of humor are not necessarily indicative of a lack of seriousness, but can very well be the motivating factors that elicit determination and produce positive results, progress. May the Most High Jack continue to guide his path and may please you, Chair.
Thank you, delegation of San Keith and Neves. We now offer the floor to the delegation of Mexico.
Gracias, señor presidente. La delegación de México despide con afecto al embajador Nestor Méndez, a quien reconoce por su papel constructivo durante los diez años que ocupó el cargo de secretario general adjunto, así como por su trato respetuoso y abierto al diálogo en todo momento. Valoramos de manera especial su compromiso con la promoción y defensa de los derechos de los pueblos indígenas y de las personas afrodescendientes, agendas que impulsó con sólida convicción, así como su liderazgo durante la pandemia de COVID-19, lo cual permitió dentro de la virtualidad dar continuidad a los trabajos de la organización. Agradecemos también de manera muy particular al equipo que colaboró con él durante los dos periodos. El trabajo de cada uno de ellos ha sido importante para cumplir los mandatos de los Estados miembros y nuestra delegación lo reconoce y lo valora. Embajador Méndez, agradecemos su cercanía y afecto hacia México, así como su disposición para facilitar el trabajo de nuestra misión permanente, lo cual refleja su profesionalismo como funcionario internacional y también la relación privilegiada entre México y Belize, nación hermana y vecina, con la que nos unen profundos lazos de amistad, respeto y cooperación. Le deseamos lo mejor en esta nueva etapa y reiteramos nuestro reconocimiento por su servicio al sistema interamericano y por su vocación multilateral. Gracias, señor presidente.
Thank you, ambassador. Next, we offer the floor to the delegation of Colombia.
Gracias, señor presidente, y buenos días para todas y para todos, señoras y señores representantes permanentes e interinos, señor secretario general Albert Randín, secretario general adjunto Nestor Méndez y su querida familia. Señoras y señores, inicialmente hablo en nombre del Grupo Diez, que integran los países de Suramérica más México, y en ese sentido es un honor tomar la palabra para rendirle un homenaje justo y merecido al secretario general adjunto Nestor Méndez y agradecer su dedicación, entrega, generosidad en favor de los objetivos de la OEA y sus Estados miembros durante los últimos diez años. Debemos reconocer su capacidad de diálogo para lograr consensos, su enfoque humanista y sus habilidades diplomáticas para gestionar crisis con la calma, el pensamiento estratégico y la visión de largo plazo que esta organización requiere. Amén de los dotes de carácter interpersonal que lo caracterizan y que fuimos beneficiarios todos. Su presencia activa en los espacios de diálogo y cooperación hemisférica han sido un testimonio de su compromiso con los valores que unen a las Américas. Pero además, ahora en nombre de Colombia quiero expresarle nuestro más sincero agradecimiento por su constante y comprometido respaldo a los esfuerzos de paz en nuestro país y la promoción de los derechos humanos. Su liderazgo desde la secretaría general adjunta de la OEA ha sido fundamental para visibilizar y acompañar el proceso de paz y para canalizar iniciativas que impulsan el desarrollo integral de nuestras comunidades marginadas en favor de los derechos de los jóvenes, las mujeres, los grupos vulnerables e históricamente discriminados y en iniciativas conjuntas frente al cambio climático y los desastres naturales. Particularmente, valoramos su liderazgo en dos temas de la mayor relevancia hemisférica: afrodescendientes y pueblos indígenas. Estos dos asuntos, bajo su liderazgo, han alcanzado una gran visibilidad a través de la organización de las Semanas Interamericanas de los Pueblos Indígenas y de las y de los afrodescendientes, poniendo sobre la mesa debates relevantes, favoreciendo la promoción de la diversidad, la equidad y la inclusión en las Américas. Ha sido un honor colaborar o colaborarle en este esfuerzo que ha permitido importantes avances en la región y en donde destacamos particularmente su respaldo junto a su departamento de inclusión social, de todo el departamento de empleados que lo han acompañado, para culminar con éxito las consultas sobre los temas prioritarios de una futura declaración interamericana de los derechos de las personas y pueblos afrodescendientes, que estamos impulsando con Brasil. Confiamos en que este proceso contará con el respaldo de los Estados miembros para avanzar en la adopción de esta declaración que va a ser histórica. Y también aprovecho la oportunidad para hacer un llamado a todos los Estados para que abordemos con mucho compromiso los asuntos relativos a la mejora de la eficiencia y eficacia de la organización. Estamos convencidos que es necesario fortalecer las actividades y priorizar los temas que se encuentran a cargo de la secretaría general adjunta como parte del camino para contar con una estructura más acorde a las necesidades actuales del hemisferio. Confiamos en que como Estados alcanzaremos acuerdos para fortalecer a la OEA para que esta pueda seguir siendo una organización relevante y capaz de generar resultados tangibles para nuestros pueblos. Secretario Méndez, permítame renovar nuestros sentimientos de amistad hacia usted y hacia su querida familia, hacia su señora madre, su señora esposa e hijos, y hacer votos para que su futuro esté lleno de éxito en las actividades que emprenda. Le agradecemos profundamente su acompañamiento, liderazgo ético y su compromiso permanente con la OEA. Su legado en la región es ejemplo de diplomacia al servicio de la equidad y el bienestar coloquial. Muchas gracias. Buen viento y buena mar.
Thank you, ambassador. Next, we offer the floor to the delegation of the United States of America.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, colleagues. The United States joins fellow member states today in recognizing and expressing our great appreciation to Ambassador Nestor Méndez for his decade of service as Assistant Secretary General of the Organization of American States. Ambassador Méndez has played an important role in sustaining and improving the day-to-day functions and direction of this organization. From overseeing the orderly conduct of this council and its committees to managing preparations for the General Assembly, he ensured the OAS operates with professionalism, continuity and decorum. In often politically sensitive environments, his steady hand and his commitment to process contributed to the integrity of this body. We recognize also Ambassador Méndez's efforts related to institutional reform, an area that remains a high priority for the United States. At the recent General Assembly in Antigua and Barbuda, our delegation stressed the need for the OAS to focus on delivering measurable results and sustaining financial discipline. And while ultimately it is the responsibility of member states to take up this agenda, Ambassador Méndez has contributed during his time here to efforts aimed at streamlining institutional processes, improving transparency and maintaining the credibility of this organization. Ambassador Méndez also embodied the values of pragmatic, people-centered diplomacy. His earlier role as Belize's ambassador in Washington gave him a unique appreciation for the importance of cooperation between the U.S. and the OAS, and we worked with him on various shared priorities over the past ten years. His welcoming and collegial approach to member states, regardless of size or political alignment, left a lasting impression. Whether presiding over high-stakes council sessions or helping delegations navigate bureaucratic hurdles, he made this institution more functional for all. And if I can just add one personal recollection, the image that is going to stay with me. About six months ago, there was a permanent council meeting that very quickly got bogged down in some procedural disagreements, legitimate issues, and we spent hours downstairs, talking here, talking there, trying to resolve these issues. And there was one point, I remember, there was a group of about eighteen or twenty permanent representatives and others, you know, trying to cluster in, listen what was being said, and right in the center of it was Nestor. You know, I would say he'd taken his tie off, but I'm sure he wasn't wearing a tie in the first place, but you know, with his sleeves rolled up figuratively, if not literally, speaking Spanish, speaking English, speaking to this group, speaking to that group, not taking the side of any one group, but just trying to find common ground, just trying to establish common ground. And that image for me, Nestor, is what I'm going to remember of that day, but of your work and your approach and your service to this organization. On behalf of the United States, we thank you for your partnership, your professionalism and your deep commitment to inter-American cooperation, and we wish you great success in all that lies ahead.
Thank you, delegation of the United States of America. Next, we offer the floor to the delegation of Honduras.
Quiero contarles que es la primera vez en mi vida que me pongo una guayavera. Y lo hago como en a que a nuestro buen amigo embajador Nestor Méndez. Pero parece que él no le avisaron que era guayaverapari. Yo quise responsabilizar al embajadorarse, pero me dijo que no, que el de esta excelente idea es el embajador Thomas. Así que no le avisaron, pero ojalá que debajo de ese jacket and de una guayavera, para que nos tomemos la foto de las de Guayavera. No quiero atenderme porque me tocó la mitad de los discursantes y en la mitad del peor peligro que puede haber. Los que ya hablaron quieren que uno se apure y los que no han hablado también quieren que uno se apure para hablar ellos. Y como ya han dicho todo lo que se puede decir, yo no quiero desesperar al homenajeado porque el homenajeado se desespera a veces porque él quisiera ya estar abrazando, conversando, riéndose con el humor que tiene mi querido Nestor. De hecho, hace tiempo yo le ofrecí un libro, una novela que se llama Nunca...
de hecho hace tiempo yo le ofrecí un libro una novela que se llama nunca te por miami siempre me reclamó pero mi querido néstor te la traje porque no me gusta quedarme con deuda y yo no veo esto como una despedida yo creo que ese era los tiempos de antes en los tiempos modernos aún hasta luego con tanta tecnología aviones medios de transporte etcétera es un hasta pronto yo no no veo por qué tener esta sesión que a veces le he sentido con sabor a funeral ya yo estaría aterrado si fuera néstor oyendo que hablan en mi de pasado no hay que combinar pasado y presente para que él se sienta bien y pueda disfrutar este día y lo digo con propiedad porque mi esposa hace como diez días se retiró del departamento de educación de nueva york y fui a la fiesta y fue una fiesta porque porque hacer lo que ha hecho méndez es un logro no que no todos lo alcanzan en la vida y es más bien digno de felicitarlo gracias néstor
thank you ambassador we now offer the floor to the delegation of dominica
thank you mr. chair secretary general his excellency albert ramdin assistant secretary general ambassador néstor méndez permanent representatives and alternates permanent observer missions ladies and gentlemen I bring greetings from the honorable prime minister Roosevelt Skerritt foreign minister doctor vince henderson and the government and people of the Commonwealth of Dominica it is with deep appreciation and sincere respect that the dominican delegation joins other missions in warmly bidding farewell to ambassador méndez as you conclude your tenure as assistant secretary general your exemplary leadership and steadfast dedication to the principles and goals of the oas have made a significant and enduring impact on the hemisphere during your tenure you have embodied the values of multilateralism inclusion and cooperation which are central to the organization and deeply resonate with the people of dominica we are particularly grateful for your attention to the specific concerns of small and vulnerable states and your ongoing efforts to ensure that the voices of all members states regardless of size and geography are heard and respected your willingness to engage in dialogue commitment to transparency and sincere desire to strengthen solidarity across the americas have not gone unnoticed as you embark on your next chapter of your journey please accept our heartfelt thanks for your service and our best wishes for continued success in your future endeavors you leave behind a legacy of diplomacy integrity and inclusive leadership that will inspire those who follow may you carry with you the gratitude and admiration of the Commonwealth of Dominica thank you ambassador
thank you delegation of the Commonwealth of Dominica we now offer the floor to the delegation of chile
gracias señor presidente chile se suma a las palabras de agradecimiento y a los buenos deseos los destinos que suma en el futuro el secretario general adjunto embajador néstor méndez bastaría referirse al constante acompañamiento al trabajo del consejo permanente en la función de su oficina para agradecer sentidamente su liderazgo sin embargo desde chile creemos que esta ocasión es especialmente propicia para recordar y saludar también las agendas con las que el embajador méndez tuvo un sistemático compromiso el empoderamiento de jóvenes y mujeres los derechos de los pueblos indígenas y afrodescendientes de las américas las cuestiones ambientales y específicamente la atención preventiva de desastres naturales como resultado del cambio climático estos son solo ejemplos que reflejan una visión estratégica y un apego a sectores de las sociedades americanas a los que el desarrollo ha solido dejar atrás pero a quienes los eventos nocivos como los efectos del cambio climático y la pandemia han solido golpear más fuerte creemos que el legado este enfoque es fundamental en la agenda del futuro para la organización así que muchas gracias embajador méndez y de nuevo me sumo a las palabras de todas las delegaciones en sus buenos augurios para el futuro gracias señor presidente
thank you delegation of chile we have next the delegation of bahamas
good morning mr. chair secretary general distinguished colleagues excellencies friends and a warm welcome to the méndez family I can recall vividly it was a hot winter morning on january twenty first nineteen seventy one in orange walk district in Belize when our mother brought you home from the hospital I looked into the cradle and I said he shall be named néstor in greek mythology néstor is the king of pilos renowned for his wisdom diplomacy and calm counsel his name has come to symbolize wisdom born of experience sound judgment and moral clarity a trusted and respected elder statesman how befitting that the boy in the cradle would one day grow up into a mind whose leadership would earn the trust and admiration of colleagues across this hemisphere today we do more than mark the conclusion of a term we celebrate the legacy of service integrity and vision that ambassador néstor méndez has brought to this organization a son of Belize a citizen of the globe and a champion of multilateralism néstor has served the inter american system with clarity and purpose and with depth of heart from the very outset of his tenure as assistant secretary general he carried out his duties with grace steadiness and calm authority that reassured member states supported this council and elevated the tone and professionalism of the general secretariat his stewardship over the general assembly process has been nothing short of exemplary the meticulous preparation the quiet diplomacy the insistence on transparency and fairness these were never just technical achievements they were acts of respect for the sovereign equality of states and for the integrity of our institution and perhaps one of the most meaningful reflections on his wisdom lies in the leadership on empowering youth and the inter american week for indigenous peoples and recognition of people of african descent in the americas no es simplemente un defensor es su alma he understood that to advance equity he must first affirm dignity and through his efforts this organization opened its doors wider to his history to truth and to justice but behind every act of public leadership lies a story of private sacrifice and so today we extend our deepest gratitude to the family who loaned néstor to the endeavors of the americas to elvira kiara anwar and to our mom thank you we know the weight of long hours of distance and of the demands of diplomacy please know that we are all in your debt and no tribute to néstor would be complete without recognizing the extraordinary team that stood with him his circle of trust his professional family whom I did not mention at the general assembly but I now fix my faux pas to ambassador la celia prince ambassador yolann smith ambassador francisco linez candle belal camen lucia de la pava sandro waketa pamela contreras rodrigo cortés roxanne cobne and apologies for missing anybody else each of you has played a vital role in shaping the work and legacy of the office of the assistant secretary general and we are ever so grateful néstor your time with us has been marked by humility integrity and a deep commitment to lifting others as this chapter closes you leave not only a record but you leave an indelible legacy on behalf of my delegation and on behalf of the government and the people of the Commonwealth of Bahamas I send a particular thank you from prime minister philip brave davis and foreign minister frederick mitchell they send their highest regards we wish you continued success peace and fulfillment in all the journeys yet to come I thank you chair and I thank the council for its kind attention
thank you ambassador the floor now goes to the delegation of costa rica
señor presidente distinguidos delegados y delegadas en nombre de costa rica deseo expresar nuestro más sincero reconocimiento y gratitud al embajador néstor méndez por su destacada labor al frente de la secretaria general de la oea durante esta década su compromiso con los valores de multilateralismo la inclusión y el diálogo ha sido ejemplar en tiempos complejos para nuestra organización su liderazgo se distinguió por su serenidad equilibrio y firme apego a los principios democráticos y al respeto entre los estados su capacidad para atender puentes entre sus regiones culturas y perspectivas diversas fue clave para preservar el espacio institucional como foro de escucha respeto y construcción de consensos deseamos destacar especialmente su invaluable impulso a la realización de las semanas interamericanas de los afrodescendientes y de los pueblos indígenas espacios que no solo contribuyeron a visibilizar las contribuciones históricas de estos pueblos sino que también colocaron sus derechos y aspiraciones en el centro de las agendas hemisféricas el embajador méndez proyectó con dignidad la diplomacia de su país y demostró con claridad cómo el compromiso con los derechos humanos el desarrollo sostenible y la cooperación pueden ampliar voces y fortalecer el sistema interamericano su legado quedará inscrito en las iniciativas que promovió pero también en el aprecio respeto y afecto que cosechó entre colegas de toda la región le deseamos el mayor de los éxitos en esta nueva etapa que emprende y con la certeza de que su trayectoria continuará siendo una fuente de inspiración para quienes creemos en la diplomacia al servicio del bien común muchas gracias embajador méndez
thank you delegation of costa rica we now offer the floor to the delegation of trinidad and tobago
thank you chair excellencies secretary general ramdin assistant secretary general méndez chair the trinidad and tobago delegation joins other member states in extending heartfelt gratitude to asg méndez for his leadership and commitment to the organization of american states during his tenure not only a son of the caricom region but a proven son of the hemisphere asg méndez administered his duties with fairness integrity compassion neutrality and humility we can all agree that his guidance and mastery of diplomacy have navigated this permanent council through some challenging times his passion and tireless efforts towards upholding the foundational principles of the oas will leave a lasting mark on this organization and the people it serves his work in the areas of climate change education security and in promoting and elevating the rights of women afro descendant and indigenous peoples as well as other vulnerable groups among other achievements must be recognized asg méndez it has been an absolute pleasure for my delegation to work alongside you and your team in striving towards a more prosperous hemisphere on behalf of the government and the people of the republic of trinidad and tobago I thank you for your exceptional service and your belief in the vast potential of the americas best of luck to you and your family ambassador méndez chair I thank you
thank you delegation of trinidad and tobago and I offer the floor to the delegation of peru
señor presidente el perú se suma al agradecimiento al embajador néstor méndez por su extraordinaria gestión como secretario general adjunto de la organización de los estados americanos en sus diez años de labor el embajador méndez se ha distinguido por su eficiencia y su profesionalismo ha cuidado que la oea obtenga el mayor provecho posible de sus recursos disponibles y ha promovido iniciativas tan pertinentes como la semana interamericana de los afrodescendientes y los pueblos indígenas el embajador méndez no ha tenido una agenda ideológica política o regional propia su acción ha estado guiada por un solo principio ordenador el fortalecimiento institucional de la oea como espacio de encuentro entre los pueblos de américa reconocemos y celebramos que así haya sido el embajador méndez se ha distinguido también por su cordialidad siempre hemos tenido en él a un amigo atento presto a facilitar nuestra propia gestión diplomática dicha cordialidad ha expresado un sentimiento genuino no impostado de empatía y de comprensión propio de un hombre de bien estamos seguros que el embajador méndez asumirá nuevas funciones profesionales con la misma calidad humana con la que ha actuado aquí a él y a su familia el perú les desea lo mejor en los tiempos que vendrán muchas gracias
thank you ambassador we now offer the floor to the delegation of guyana guyana is not present so we move to the next delegation we offer the floor to the delegation of ecuador
gracias señor presidente señor secretario general secretario general adjunto reciba por parte del ecuador el reconocimiento a su comprometida gestión al frente de la secretaria general adjunta de esta organización durante los últimos diez años en los cuales ha impulsado iniciativas de alta sensibilidad y especial relevancia para todos los estados miembros en concordancia con la visión que el ecuador sostiene en esta organización reconocemos que durante su gestión se promovieron iniciativas coherentes con los principios fundamentales que orientan nuestra acción multilateral tales como la inclusión la participación activa y el fortalecimiento del diálogo regional estos esfuerzos incluyeron la consolidación de la inclusión y visibilidad de los pueblos afrodescendientes e indígenas así como la promoción decidida de los derechos humanos y el desarrollo sostenible temas que el ecuador considera prioritarios en una agenda para la cooperación hemisférica más equitativa más inclusiva y efectiva estas acciones están plenamente en línea con la política exterior de nuestra región basada en la búsqueda de resultados concretos y el fortalecimiento institucional diplomacia que apuesta por el diálogo la cooperación y articulación de esfuerzos frente a desafíos comunes desde una américa diversa incluyente e interconectada al cierre de este ciclo aspiramos la continuidad y profundización del trabajo que usted ha realizado conscientes de que los avances alcanzados constituyen por sí mismos una base sólida sobre la cual construyamos el futuro le deseamos suerte y éxitos en sus futuros proyectos tanto personales como profesionales
thank you delegation of ecuador the floor now goes to the delegation of bolivia
gracias señor presidente permítanme en principio saludar al secretario general de la organización embajador albert landín a nuestro distinguido secretario general adjunto embajador néstor méndez en cuyo homenaje se lleva adelante esta sesión extraordinaria del consejo permanente saludar también a la presidencia y a toda la membresía el estado plurinacional de bolivia reconoce y valora en alto grado la importante labor cumplida extraordinariamente por el secretario general adjunto de la organización de estados americanos embajador néstor méndez quien durante diez años con gran profesionalismo con mucha experiencia condujo una instancia fundamental de la organización cuál es la secretaria general adjunta queremos hacer mención solamente por cuestión de tiempo a dos de las tantas actividades que el embajador méndez organizó y dirigió tan acertadamente la semana interamericana de los pueblos indígenas y la de los afrodescendientes personalmente quisiera valorar en esta ocasión la humildad con la que en estos aproximadamente seis años me tocó percibir del embajador néstor méndez un valor que creo que es el más importante a más de ello señor presidente permítanme ahora dar lectura de manera inextensa al mensaje enviado por el embajador héctor arcesa coneta quien se encuentra de viaje en nuestro país bolivia y cito hermano néstor "Hermano Néstor, permíteme llamarte así, hermano, como nuestros pueblos indígenas en Bolivia identifican a las personas que valoran y respetan. Tu trabajo durante diez años al mando de la secretaría general adjunta fue verdaderamente extraordinario y de gran productividad. Siempre te basaste en la institucionalidad, el profesionalismo, la aplicación de las normas y las técnicas correctas para una gestión impecable, ejemplar e inmejorable. Tu capacidad diplomática para lograr consensos también fue decisiva para el bienestar de la OEA. Además de ello, mostraste una calidad humana extraordinaria para mantener una línea correcta e independiente en los momentos difíciles que se produjeron a lo largo de estos diez años. Por diferentes razones que todos conocemos, tu mensaje certero, tu voz honesta, tu lealtad con la verdad y tu carisma hicieron siempre una experiencia extraordinariamente y contar y trabajar contigo. Quiero destacar muy especial, muy especialmente todo el apoyo que brindaste a la misión de Bolivia cuando nos tocó ejercer la presidencia del Consejo Permanente entre enero y marzo de esta gestión. Siempre se recordaré y me llevaré conmigo el honor de haber llevado tantas sesiones de importancia sentado al lado tuyo, trabajando bajo tu consejo y tu guía leal, honesta y desinteresada. Aquí me permito hacer extensiva mi felicitación y mi agradecimiento a tu valioso equipo, a la embajadora Lacy Lee Prince, a Carmen Lucía, Rodrigo, Roxanne y todos y cada uno de los miembros del equipo quienes han desarrollado junto a ti grandes capacidades profesionales alimentadas por una gran calidad humana. Con mi modesta experiencia a la cabeza de instituciones públicas en mi país, créeme que si algo habla bien de los líderes es la forma como sus equipos, sus funcionarios expresan su aprecio y respeto hacia él. En tu caso, te llevas el testimonio más grande de valoración, cariño y respeto de un equipo de trabajo cuya huella está sentada en las páginas de excelencia institucional de la organización. Hermano Néstor, contá siempre con mi amistad y mi respeto, con una carrera brillante. Tienes aún mucho por recorrer, mucho por construir y los que te conocemos estamos seguros de que estés donde estés siempre harás brillar la luz de la excelencia. Finalizo estas palabras haciendo un homenaje especial a tu esposa, tu compañera de vida, quien siempre te ha apoyado y a quien todos recordaremos por su carisma y el don de gente. Te mando un gran abrazo hasta que nos volvamos a ver, hermano. Doctor Héctor Enrique Arcesa Coneta, embajador representante permanente de Bolivia ante la OEA. Muchas gracias, presidente.
Thank you, delegation of Bolivia. Guyana is back with us, so I would offer the floor to the delegation of Guyana.
Thank you, Chair. SG Ramdin, colleagues, ASG Mendez, his family members and friends. Guyana joins other member states to bid farewell to our esteemed Assistant Secretary General and friend Nester Mendez, who has dedicated a considerable amount of his time and energy towards forging an OAS that reflects and responds to the needs of the countries and peoples of the Americas. ASG Mendez has been a comforting friend and guide to me since I arrived here four years ago, a senior as the COVID-19 epidemic had begun to wane and additionally uneasy at living outside of Guyana for the first time since the mid 1960s. Guyana and Guyanese had first heard the name Ambassador Nester Mendez of Belize perhaps late 2014, early 2015, when there was talk of our ambassador then in being the race with Ambassador Mendez of Belize for the post of ASG of the OAS. There could not have been a better person that Guyana could have lost out to. ASG Mendez, you have always been open, welcoming and quick to share your knowledge and experience. You utilized your acumen and wisdom underpinned by an inclusive, equitable and cooperative approach to aid in building a better and stronger OAS. This is particularly evident in the considerable work undertaken to give recognition and raise awareness and to modernize and drive innovation in aspects of the organization's work, even in circumstances of limited financial resources. I have grown accustomed to ASG Mendez announcing, "Mr. Chair, we have a coram." I join in noticing ASG's enthusiasm for the annual AfroDescendants Week and Indigenous Peoples Week. I sensed an unexpected kindred experience during Indigenous Week a year or two ago, when ASG Mendez spoke about cutting and burning a field with grandparents and learning how to make music to call the wind. I had had similar experience, particularly whistling to call the wind to help separate full grains of paddy rice from the empty ones. ASG Mendez, as you step out of this role, I convey to you the highest regard and deep affinity of the government and people of the cooperative Republic of Guyana. We thank you and here make a special mention of your team for your service and dedication to the people of the Americas. The old adage calls on us to give credit where it is due. Such credit is owed to you and the officials who made your tenure such a success and it is with great pleasure that we extend that credit. We wish you all the best, rest assured of our respect, admiration and continued support. I thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ambassador. We now offer the floor to the delegation of Haiti.
Gracias, señor presidente. Señor presidente, señor secretario general, señor secretario general adjunto, madame, monsieur, les ambassadeurs, représentants permanents, représentants observateurs, chers amis, distinguis invités. C'est à la fois pour moi un très grand honneur et un immense privilège de participer à cette session extraordinaire consacrée aux adieux à notre secretariat général adjoint, l'ambassadeur Néstor Mendez. J'ai rencontré l'ambassadeur Mendez lors de ma première affectation à l'OEA il y a environ une quinzaine d'années. J'ai eu la chance de le voir à l'œuvre en tant qu'ambassadeur représentant son pays, le Belize, avant de devenir secretariat général adjoint de l'OEA. Au-delà du leadership remarquable de l'ambassadeur Mendez, je voudrais témoigner des qualités humaines de l'homme. L'ambassadeur Mendez incarne un sens profond d'humanité, d'amitié. Tout en sachant pertinemment que l'ambassadeur Mendez venait du Belize, qui est plutôt un pays de l'Amerique centrale, il ne faisait aucun doute que l'ambassadeur Mendez était un homme continental, un homme universel à portée continentale. L'ambassadeur Mendez a toujours fait montre d'un sens aigu de fraternité. En témoigne sa façon de vous saluer avec la même chaleur humaine et les mêmes mots: "My brother", "Mon frère". Je n'ai jamais entendu l'ambassadeur Mendez me dire "Bonjour" ou "Bonsoir". Il m'accueille toujours avec ces mêmes mots: "My brother", et c'est tellement plus chaleureux. Monsieur le secretariat général adjoint, mon cher frère, votre héritage impactera pour longtemps notre organisation hemisphérique, voire la région elle-même. Vos multiples initiatives, qu'il s'agisse de la place accordée aux personnes d'ascendance africaine, aux peuples ésotectones, en cela je salue aussi votre équipe qui fait un excellent travail en vous, en vous supportant dans ces initiatives. Votre attention sans relâche à la cause d'Haiti et votre attention aux problèmes des petits États insulaires témoigne de votre grand sens de leadership. Je voudrais conclure mes propos en rappelant que lors de votre première élection comme secretariat général adjoint, l'ambassadeur Mendez vous disiez que c'était le plus beau jour de votre vie. Aujourd'hui, en vous faisant nos adieux, nous ne pouvons que vous souhaiter plein d'autres beaux jours de votre vie. Je vous remercie.
Thank you, delegation of Haiti. The floor is now offered to the delegation of Paraguay.
Señor presidente y representantes permanentes, señor Alberto Randín, secretario general de la organización, señor Néstor Mendez, secretario general adjunto. Mi delegación se adhiere plenamente a las palabras expresadas por la distinguida delegación de Colombia en justo reconocimiento a la destacada gestión y al firme compromiso del secretario general adjunto durante una década de servicio al frente de esta organización y al conjunto de nuestras naciones. Deseamos en particular expresar nuestro más sincero agradecimiento por el valioso apoyo brindado por el embajador Méndez durante los preparativos del 54º periodo de sesiones de la Asamblea General que se celebró en Asunción en junio del año pasado. Su constante disposición y su orientación certera, así como su amabilidad, fueron claves para sortear los desafíos de esos intensos meses de trabajo. Sin duda, su acompañamiento fue determinante para el éxito de ese evento. Apreciado embajador Méndez, tenga la certeza de que los esfuerzos realizados a lo largo de estos años no han pasado desapercibidos. Su entrega, su liderazgo sereno y su incansable vocación por el diálogo franco e inclusivo han marcado su labor como secretario general adjunto. Usted deja una profunda huella, la de quien siempre apostó por el consenso incluso en medio de las más complejas diferencias. La de quien trabajó con autenticidad por una OEA más abierta, más humana y más cercana a los pueblos que representa. En el inicio de una nueva etapa para la secretaría general adjunta, confiamos en que los cimientos que usted ha construido y los valores que ha representado, integridad, compromiso, diálogo y servicio, seguirán guiando el camino hacia una OEA más relevante y efectiva para alcanzar los ideales de paz y justicia que consagra nuestra carta fundacional. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, delegation of Paraguay. We now offer the floor to the delegation of Uruguay.
Gracias, señor presidente. Señor secretario general, señor secretario general adjunto, mi delegación adhiere a las sentidas palabras expresadas por el embajador Luis Ernesto Vargas de Colombia en su calidad de coordinador del Grupo Diez. En nombre de Uruguay queremos expresar nuestro más sincero reconocimiento y gratitud al embajador Néstor Mendez por sus años de servicio comprometido al frente de la secretaría general adjunta de esta organización. Durante estos años, el embajador Méndez ha sido un referente de profesionalismo, equilibrio y compromiso con los principios que nos convocan en la OEA. Su gestión marcada por la sobriedad, el equilibrio y el respeto a la institucionalidad ha sido un ejemplo de liderazgo constructivo en un contexto hemisférico a menudo complejo. Uruguay ha valorado su permanente disposición al diálogo y su vocación integradora. También destacamos su impulso a temas fundamentales como la participación juvenil, la equidad de género, afrodescendencia, pueblos indígenas y el fortalecimiento institucional, entre otros tantos, siempre desde una perspectiva inclusiva y moderna. Embajador Méndez, le deseamos lo mejor en los caminos que elija recorrer a partir de ahora. Se va con el respeto y el aprecio del Uruguay y con el legado de una gestión comprometida, ética y profundamente interamericana. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, delegation of Uruguay. The floor now goes to the delegation of Argentina.
Gracias, presidente. La delegación argentina se suma a lo dicho por las delegaciones precedentes. Creemos que no hay mucho más que agregar acerca de las cualidades humanas y profesionales del embajador Méndez y del invariable y enorme aporte que brindó al sistema interamericano. Primeramente como representante permanente de su país, momento en el cual tuve el honor y el placer de conocerlo y trabajar en la Comisión de Seguridad Hemisférica que presidía, y luego como secretario general adjunto de la OEA. Y en ese contexto queremos especialmente agradecer la permanente predisposición y colaboración y ayuda en tanto coordinador de la Asamblea General de la OEA respecto al punto uno de la cuarta sesión plenaria que es la cuestión de las Islas Malvinas, de suma importancia para nuestro país. Este agradecimiento queremos extenderlo a todo su equipo, a Lacy Lee, a Carmen Lucía, a Yolanda, bueno, Francisco que ahora no lo veo, a Francisco también, a Kendall, a Roxanne, a Rodrigo y seguramente a todos aquellos que me estoy olvidando. Nos ayudaron realmente muchísimo en todo momento y creo que los que quedan nos seguirán ayudando. A los que se van les deseamos la mejor de la suerte en otra, en otro lugar o en otra situación. Yo creo que, creemos que a la OEA siempre se vuelve, así que seguramente nos vamos a estar cruzando. Lo vamos a extrañar mucho y muchas gracias, muchas gracias por todo. Gracias, señor presidente.
Thank you, delegation of Argentina. We now offer the floor to the delegation of Suriname. Thank you, Chair. I don't have anything to add to all the explanations that were given, but you see our solidarity today, Mr. Mendez, and some of us have dressed up especially for you. I just want to say thank you, Ambassador Mendez, and thank you for being there also as a friend. Thank you, Nester. Thank you, Ambassador. We now offer the floor to the delegation of Guatemala.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente. Para la delegación de Guatemala es un honor participar en esta sesión extraordinaria del Consejo Permanente en la que expresamos nuestro reconocimiento y despedimos con aprecio y gratitud al excelentísimo señor Néstor Mendez, quien ha ejercido con distinción el cargo de secretario general adjunto de la organización de los Estados americanos. Deseamos destacar el valioso trabajo desempeñado por el embajador Méndez a lo largo de estos diez años al servicio de la organización. Su liderazgo, capacidad de adaptación frente a los desafíos regionales, en particular durante la pandemia y el periodo posterior, así como su compromiso con una agenda dinámica, inclusiva y sensible a las realidades de los pueblos del hemisferio han dejado una impronta profunda en el sistema interamericano. Valoramos especialmente el espíritu abierto y constructivo con el que condujo su gestión, promoviendo espacios de diálogo franco entre los Estados miembros y respaldando iniciativas claves en áreas como la seguridad alimentaria y nutricional, la igualdad de género, el emprendimiento juvenil y la promoción de los derechos humanos con enfoque de equidad. Apreciamos su constante apoyo a los pueblos indígenas, a las personas afrodescendientes, incluye la organización de Semanas Interamericanas y a las comunidades en situación de vulnerabilidad. Su liderazgo ha contribuido de manera significativa a consolidar una OEA más inclusiva, más cercana a la ciudadanía y más comprometida con los principios que compartimos. Permítanme compartir un gesto que refleja el reconocimiento del pueblo guatemalteco. El 27 de octubre de 2022, durante la novena reunión interamericana de ministras y ministros de cultura celebrada en la ciudad de antiguo Guatemala, el embajador Méndez recibió las llaves de la ciudad en representación del secretario general como muestra de aprecio a su compromiso por la cultura y el desarrollo regional. Este acto simbolizó no solo el reconocimiento institucional, sino también el aprecio que su labor ha generado en la región. Estamos convencidos de que la nueva secretaría general adjunta, señora Laura Gil, dará continuidad a los temas prioritarios impulsados durante esta gestión y fortalecerá el rol de la secretaría como un espacio de coordinación, diálogo y acción en beneficio de los Estados miembros. Guatemala reitera su disposición a seguir trabajando de manera... Guatemala reitera su disposición a seguir trabajando de manera conjunta y constructiva a favor de las prioridades compartidas del hemisferio. Para concluir, reiteramos nuestro agradecimiento al embajador Méndez por su entrega, profesionalismo y compromiso con los valores del sistema interamericano. Les deseamos mucho éxito en los nuevos desafíos que emprenda.
Thank you Ambassador. And I offer the floor to the delegation of Jamaica.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Secretary General Ramden, Assistant Secretary General Méndez, distinguished colleagues. It is an honor on behalf of the government and people of Jamaica to join in extending our deepest appreciation and warmest farewell to Ambassador Néstor Méndez. Ambassador Méndez has served the hemisphere with distinction, diplomacy and unwavering commitment over the past decade. Throughout his tenure, he brought to this role a deep understanding of the challenges facing our region and a tireless passion for promoting hemispheric cooperation, social inclusion and development. Jamaica recalls with particular appreciation Ambassador Méndez's steadfast engagement with Caricó Member States and his continued advocacy on issues of central importance to small island developing states. Whether advancing dialogue on youth empowerment, climate resilience, the digital economy or institutional strengthening, Ambassador Méndez was a constant voice for equity, partnership and innovation. We also commend his leadership in strengthening collaboration with the University of the West Indies as well as his initiatives in the areas of education, gender equality and public health. He was often a bridge between stakeholders, the organization and civil society, between member states and multilateral partners, always encouraging constructive dialogue and mutual respect. Ambassador Méndez's tenure has been marked by sensitivity to the needs of member states, especially during periods of regional crisis and transition. Ambassador Méndez embodied the spirit of regionalism, multilateralism and the core values of the inter-American system, upholding the principles of democracy, human rights and sustainable development. Additionally, he showed a deep commitment to fostering a spirit of inclusion and mutual respect across the Americas. He has been an advocate for celebrating the rich cultural diversity of member states, ensuring that the OAS recognized and honored the national days and commemorate occasions of its member states. His leadership in this regard not only prompted unity but also underscored the value of cultural identity as a cornerstone of regional solidarity. As he admits office, Jamaica offers sincere wishes to Ambassador Méndez in all his future endeavors. We trust that the legacy he leaves behind at the OAS will continue to inspire a new generation of hemispheric leaders. Ambassador Méndez, your calm diplomacy, infectious energy and unwavering professionalism will be greatly missed in these halls. Thank you for your service and please rest assured that you will always have the enduring respect and friendship of Jamaica. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Ambassador. The floor now goes to the delegation of Barbados.
Thank you Chair. Secretary General Ramden, Assistant Secretary General Méndez, permanent representatives, alternates, permanent observers, colleagues. Mr. Chair, I hope that my short intervention won't require the use of your mute button. It is a feature I know my wife wishes that she had access to on occasions. I do apologize Assistant SG for being late this morning. Today I drove myself into the OAS and I had the dilemma a couple of times of listening either to the GPS or to my wife's instructions. We know who won in that regard. Today is kind of special because, my brother, to quote one of my colleagues, "You are being celebrated in a way that, in a sense, it is almost like previewing your eulogy." All these wonderful things that people say about you after you have departed. And so you get a glimpse into the future. I trust it will not be as long on that occasion, though I suspect you would not be bothered by time. So today I will do the mandatory thing because duty requires me to repeat some of what has already been said. So I hope not to bore you too long. The phrase which notes many are called but few are chosen originates from the parable of the wedding banquet in the Bible. This phrase is apt and the parallel here is that you, sir, have demonstrated faith and obedience in the execution of your tasks over the last ten years as Assistant SG. As many of my colleagues have said before, you have lived your life the way you have carried out your duties as Assistant SG with passion, wholeheartedness and enthusiasm. Barbados is therefore pleased to join the many others who have sung your praises and have recognized your decade of service and leadership here at the OAS. Since taking office, you have elevated the OAS's profile as our hemisphere's leading political institution. You've been an unyielding voice of integration, inclusivity and efficiency, giving the OAS backbone in moments of profound regional challenge, most noticeably during the COVID-19 pandemic. You reminded us that defending the Inter-American Democratic Charter is not a mere statement of principle. It is the cornerstone of this body's legitimacy and its purpose. Under your tenure, the OAS responded with a resolve to do a job without the financial resources to do it. Your leadership and the work of your immediate team will be remembered. Your support for activities pertaining to people of African descent and to the Caribbean community have also deepened the OAS's role in placing expressions and human dignity at the center of a development vision for the organization. The OAS has become even better for it. Assistant SG Méndez, as we say goodbye to you, we thank you for your years of service which have been marked by moral clarity and a commitment to action. We wish you continued success and we thank you for your contributions to the cause of creating an inclusive and dignified hemisphere. On behalf of the government and people of Barbados, I wish you all the best in your future endeavors as you embark on the next chapter of your career. On a personal note, I want to thank you for the very warm welcome that you gave me on assuming the Chair of the PC immediately on arrival without having a clue as to how it operates. I'm grateful to you for that. The absence of the wire bearer today is really indicative of the difficulty in sizing one from my dimensions. They have to be built, they're not off the rack. I want you to know however that I have secured a source and that we are in production at this time. I look forward, as I gather you have not spent as many years in your beautiful Belize as perhaps you should have, to sharing and exploring Placencia Anias, Orange Walk too as well, and Amberges Key, aka we know the name that it is called by, and the waters of the amazing reefs, the Great Barrier Reef, second only to the one in Australia. I'm sure that you will find time for some of those, though I suspect that is not all that is in your future. And I thank you for your friendship. It has been a delight to know you and you have also helped me to be liberated from the tie. I thank you.
Thank you Ambassador. We now have a few interventions from the permanent missions. Subs of emissions and we begin with the delegation of Spain.
Gracias señor presidente. Buenos días. Quiero agradecer la convocatoria de este Consejo Permanente que nos da la oportunidad de sumarnos al balance del mandato del embajador Néstor Méndez al frente de la Secretaría General Adjunta de la OEA. Una oportunidad para agradecer su labor en favor de la organización de Estados Americanos y su buena disposición con esta misión observadora permanente de España. Y sobre todo desearle buena suerte en la etapa que ahora comienza. Se han referenciado muchas cuestiones en esta sesión como la transición con éxito al espacio virtual y a la digitalización en el momento de la pandemia del COVID-19 o el impulso de las semanas de las personas afrodescendientes y de las comunidades originarias en las que siempre se nos ha invitado a colaborar y lo hemos hecho con gusto. Pero no podía dejar pasar la oportunidad de tomar la palabra para hacer un especial reconocimiento del liderazgo del embajador Méndez en dos cuestiones sobresalientes, a mi parecer que vienen a engrosar sus méritos. La primera, la salud mental y la prevención del suicidio. Tuve la oportunidad de compartir trabajo y reflexiones en el marco de la Comisión Conjunta OPSI OEA sobre la materia que redactó la hoja de ruta para la salud mental en las Américas. Un primer paso que ahora se ha visto muy reforzado en la 55 Asamblea General de Antigua y Barbuda. Y segundo, también debo mencionar su empeño en el bilingüismo. Sacar hacia adelante algunos avances en relación al fortalecimiento del español no ha sido sencillo ni rápido, pero también se han podido dar algunos primeros pasos que esperamos poder seguir impulsando en lo sucesivo. Gracias por su complicidad y su visión de considerar el español como una oportunidad de estrechar lazos y crear nuevas oportunidades de desarrollo y progreso. Ese legado queda en la OEA y no me imagino nada más satisfactorio que cuando se termina una etapa las ideas y los proyectos perduren más allá de uno mismo. Así que quiero darle la enhorabuena. Y por último, agradecerle la cercanía que siempre ha demostrado con esta misión y su buen talente que esperamos haya sido, haya visto correspondido. Este agradecimiento de hoy también se hace extensivo a su equipo, a todo su equipo y especialmente en hombro a la Selia Prince con la que hemos conversado y trabajado mucho. Querido Néstor, deja un grato recuerdo en esta organización. Le deseo la mejor de la suerte de aquí en adelante.
Thank you Ambassador. I now offer the floor to the delegation of France.
Merci beaucoup monsieur le président. Mesdames et messieurs les ambassadrices et ambassadeurs, chers collègues, cher Néstor Méndez. La France souhaite s'associer aux remerciements et aux hommages qui vous ont été adressés aujourd'hui. Mais tout a déjà été dit et je ne vais pas répéter l'importance de votre héritage et de votre contribution à cette organisation à la fois par votre connaissance de la structure, par votre engagement sur des sujets aussi variés que les droits des afrodescendants, la santé mentale, la jeunesse ou la société civile. Je voudrais surtout vous remercier pour votre bienveillance envers la communauté OEA et en particulier envers les États observateurs auxquels vous avez toujours accordé votre écoute et vos conseils. Mais je ne peux non plus terminer cet hommage sans un remerciement spécial à votre équipe qui à votre image a toujours démontré ouverture et un soutien irremplaçable. Cher Néstor Méndez, merci beaucoup.
Thank you Ambassador. And I offer the floor to the delegation of Italy.
Grazie signor presidente. Queremos también nosotros como delegación italiana ante la OEA sumarnos a este momento de saludo y de despedida oficial del embajador Néstor Méndez por su distinguida actuación durante una década en calidad de Secretario General Adjunto para promover y fortalecer en estrecha colaboración con el Secretario General los cuatro pilares en el que se fundamenta la OEA, en particular en los ámbitos de los derechos humanos y de la protección de los grupos vulnerables. Destacamos además el complejo y silencioso trabajo de preparación de las asambleas generales que representan el momento más alto y relevante y tal vez más complejo de la vida de la OEA desde un punto de vista político. Pero es en el día a día que el embajador Méndez ha sobresalido gracias a sus calidades profesionales cultivadas y cosechadas a lo largo de una prestigiosa carrera diplomática y humanas. Calidades que le han valido la reelección por unanimidad en 2020 y por cierto la calidad de despedida de hoy. Le deseamos todo lo mejor para su futuro y aunque su trabajo siempre ha sido norteado por los principios de autonomía, independencia y imparcialidad, creemos que también el nombre de su país de proveniencia belice haya relucido a través de él a lo largo de estos años. Al mismo tiempo queremos saludar y agradecer a su equipo a partir de la Jefa de Gabinete la embajadora Selia Prince por la colaboración siempre otorgada. Gracias presidente.
Thank you delegation of Italy. I now offer the floor to the delegation of the Holy See.
Muchas gracias señor presidente. Esta delegación de la Santa Sede se une a las distinguidas delegaciones de los Estados miembros y observadores para despedir al estimado Secretario General Adjunto Néstor Méndez. Durante estos años que tengo el privilegio de participar en las actividades y comunidad de esta casa de las Américas he podido constatar de primera mano su destacada capacidad organizativa que es acompañada por su gran talente y afable personalidad. Un reconocimiento a su invaluable contribución junto a todo su equipo en modo particular en tiempos de la pandemia que gracias a usted se pudo seguir sesionando de modo virtual gracias a la plataforma Cudo. Como también una palabra de admiración a su liderazgo con la organización de la Semana de los Pueblos Indígenas y Afrodescendientes. Algo que pudimos apreciar hace dos o tres años fue su experiencia traída a este Salón de las Américas cuando subo a traer el civido tan típico de su amada tierra, Belice, algo que quizá mejor no repetir como en aquella ocasión. Por último, un agradecimiento a su compromiso y ayuda prestada en la visibilización y promoción del derecho fundamental de la libertad religiosa en la región colaborando con esta misión de la Santa Sede, algo que fue fundamental. Le deseo abundantes bendiciones a usted, a su esposa Elvira, a su madre Genoveva, a sus hijos y a toda su familia. Que los vientos le sean favorables en esta nueva etapa de su vida. Reciba un fuerte abrazo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you delegation of the Holy See. I see we now reach our final contribution and we offer the floor to the delegation of the European Union.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to try to be brief because I know I'm the last one up and always saving the best for last. I'm happy to be here today representing the European Union as we gather to honor a decade of leadership and commitment to our shared principles. Assistant Secretary General Néstor Méndez assumed office in 2015 with the clear vision to uphold democracy, defend human rights, foster integral development particularly in the area of climate change and to ensure multidimensional security throughout the Americas. Over the past ten years Ambassador Méndez has led the OAS through moments of profound change and extraordinary challenge and under his stewardship reaffirmed the OAS's role as the hemisphere's foremost multilateral forum, a place where member states of this organization come together to defend the core values enshrined in the Inter-American Democratic Charter. A hallmark of his leadership has been his contributions to the revitalization of the OAS as a platform for global engagement including deepened collaboration with permanent observers who have consistently demonstrated solidarity with our partners in the Americas. Assistant Secretary General Méndez worked diligently to foster partnerships with observers in areas such as electoral observation, sustainable development and gender equality. So of course leadership is not exercised in isolation. Assistant Secretary General Méndez has been supported by a dedicated team, by member states willing to engage and by citizens across the Americas who believe in the promise of democracy and the power of regional cooperation. But I do want to offer one little Ma voglio offrire un piccolo aneddoto. Ricordo che molti anni fa, quando mia figlia era in scuola medievale qui localmente e stavano pianificando un viaggio in Belice e era fuori d'occhio di essere in grado di esperire un bel paese come il tuo. Quindi, chiesi all'ambassatore a quel tempo: "Potete, per favore, organizzare o aiutare a organizzare una visita all'embassaggio?" E devo dire grazie molto per questo perché credo che non avrebbero mai avuto l'esperienza che hanno avuto senza aver avuto un preview dei meravigliosi that your country had to offer. Quindi, assistente segretario generale Méndez, a causa dell'Unione Europea, vi ringraziamo per il vostro servizio e per la collaborazione incredibile in avanzando la democrazia, i diritti umani e la sicurezza regionale importanti sforzi che continuiamo a supportare. Vi auguriamo successo in arrivo e fidiamo che ovunque voi vi portate l'anima di America e l'anima dell'Unione Europea vi porterà con voi. Grazie.
Thank you representative from the European Union. I see we have no further requests on the board. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank all delegates for your warm and moving contributions, I think, to this special celebration. I now have the honor to offer the floor to Assistant Secretary General to the Organization of American States, Ambassador Nestor Méndez. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I must confess that there have been few times in my life when I have felt moved, touched to the point of feeling almost speechless. And for me, it's a first. I really have been... I don't know how to react when people talk about me like that. And I hope the ambassador of Barbados is not correct in saying that it was a preview of a eulogy. But anyway, distinguished chairman of the Permanent Council, distinguished secretary general of the OAS, distinguished ambassadors, permanent representatives and alternate representatives, permanent and alternate observers, dear members of my family and dear friends who are sharing with us today, esteemed colleagues of my team, my executive office and, of course, the wider family of the OAS General Secretariat, including all of our people spread in our national offices across our member states. From very young, I was taught when you're in doubt as to how to proceed, you turn to the Almighty. So I want to start saying a word of thanks to our divine Creator for his love, his protection, for watching over my family and myself and the extended family of the Organization of American States all my life, but especially over the last ten years. That's where we start, that's the cornerstone. Thanks to the Almighty. It is indeed a special honor to address you, to convey my heartfelt gratitude to everyone and to bid farewell to the Permanent Council as I conclude my second five-year term, ten years as Assistant Secretary General of this noble institution. I wish to especially recognize the members of my family that are here today, some of whom traveled many, many miles to be here and I truly appreciate your presence this morning. I am more than touched by the effort you have made to join us today. While thinking about what to say today and what to say in this final opportunity to address the Permanent Council in this capacity, I started asking myself what are the important things that I have learned in the past ten years? And I realized that from the very beginning of my first term and throughout the ten years in office, I was constantly reminded of the awesome responsibility inherent in holding public office. How overwhelmingly significant it is for member states to deposit their trust in you, to vote for you, to work with you and to stand with you for an entire decade. My heartfelt appreciation to all the member states for this trust, for their support over the last decade. The OAS is at a moment of renewal and a moment of continuity. I wish to take this opportunity to once again extend my congratulations to Secretary General Albert Ramdin, who's taking over at a very important, crucial period of time in the life of our organization. And of course, also to Ambassador Laura Hill, who will be taking office at the beginning of next week. We are happy that the OAS will remain in good hands with them at the helm. I also want to take the opportunity to give a special shout out to former Secretary General Luis Almagro, dear friend and colleague of ten years with whom we fought many battles internally and externally, while keeping view of the importance of protecting the institution and the principles it represents. Luis, wherever you are right now, my brother, I hope you're doing well. So, we have had a long morning and I've never been one for lente speeches. A lot of things have been said this morning and I have been profoundly touched by it. I'm moved and I'm very grateful. But I do want to mention a couple of things. One of the things that I am concerned about really is that I have noticed, I have seen over the last ten years, it didn't start over the last ten years, it's been longer, but the state of the relationship between the member states and the General Secretariat, it's something that needs to be re-looked. That state of suspicion, that idea that something sinister is going on, it's not a good feeling, it's not constructive, we can do better than that. The enemy is not within our ranks, the enemy is outside and we need to close ranks. Our institution needs it more than ever. Well, I won't extend myself into that, it starts to get into negative territory and those who know me know I prefer to remain positive and look forward at what we can improve. There will be circulating shortly a publication that I'm leaving as a legacy. It was prepared by the staff in my office. I want to recognize the project leader Kendall Bélail, who I asked to take over this final project, KB, and she said, "This will be the last one", right? And I said, "Indeed". So you will be getting it shortly. It is an interactive product. It's a book mostly with some interviews, not a lot of political analysis because the real experts in that are sitting around the table and so I have stayed away from that. But I did want to share some of the more intimate experiences working within the secretariat, what it has meant to me, what I have learned and in particular what we had to do during the covid pandemic when the entire world shut down and we were forced to migrate into the virtual world and ensure continuity of business in an institution that at that moment became even more important because this is where we had to meet to talk about how we're going to face that global threat together. So that kind of experience is how we had to adapt the technology, you know, how we had to train people both in the use of equipment and new equipment. And I learned so much in that process. So those are the kinds of information and interviews that are shared in the book. And so I want to thank, as I said, Kendall. I also want to thank from the print shop Roxana Reyes, Carla Daniela Silva, the graphic artist, and from the Department of Press and Communications Gonzalo Esparriz, Morgan Neal and Kern Stanley. In a moment like this, the most important thing, as I said in the General Assembly, is to give thanks. So I want to start by giving thanks to the Prime Minister of Belize, John Bruseno, and the former Prime Minister of Belize, Dean Barrow, for their support during my time in office, for being there whenever I needed to consult, whenever I need to call. That availability means a lot to me. Thank you to both of them. Sometimes the most obvious things are never said. But I want to thank my country, Belize. I want to thank that beautiful, small, unique gem in Central America, the bastion of democracy and stability. A place where a young man from a village, growing up in the rural north of Belize, can dream big and work hard and get an education and make it to be ambassador of Belize to the United States and the OAS and then make it to be elected to be the Assistant Secretary General of this organization. That is the country where I come from and I know I'm extremely blessed and I'm so proud. Thank you to my country. I want to thank my executive staff, whom you know, people who have been with me over the last ten years. They're sitting right there. Lasilia, thank you for everything you've done, for being always there. Lasilia and I, we did not always agree on the how, but we always agreed on the what. And the what was always in the best interest of the people we serve. And so, thank you for being there, for all the work, the council and you know, for the service you have given to the people of the Americas. Carmen Lucia, of course, always in very discreetly but extremely in control of everything that's going on. Her invaluable work, those who have chaired the Permanent Council know how much work goes into that with her team and Rodrigo and the other committee secretaries Roxani in the office. Carmen Lucia is a quiet force of nature in her own right. Discreet, effective and always reliable. Thank you very much. Yolanda, who came on board late in my team, coordinating the network of national offices that sometimes overlooked but tremendously valuable asset of our institution. I want to give a special shout out to them. I'm sure many of them are watching today, trying to feel connected. Sometimes they say they feel a little left out because they're far. I want to assure them that they're very much a part of us as much as those people whose offices are in the administrative building on F Street. We value your work, we know you are our front office on the field and we know that you help touch in a positive way the lives of people every day across the Americas. I also want to thank Francisco, he and his team with the Department of Conferences and Meetings Management. Those are the guys who make the magic happen. Those are the guys who are first on the ground in the preparation of every big meeting and they are the last to leave the site after the conclusion of these meetings. They work hard, they spend sometimes all night. And if they have to wake up at four in the morning and go back to setting up, doing things, troubleshooting, making sure that when the principals arrive, when the foreign ministers, when the ambassadors, when the representatives arrive, that they can be confident that when they press the button, their country's voice will be heard. That is a tremendous service that they give all the time. So Francisco, thank you and Sandra Gloria and the entire team who has been working and delivering for our people throughout these years. Kendall, of course Kendall is our special projects. Kendall is our go-to, she put a lot of effort into organizing many of the events in my office and whenever there was something new totally that needed whatever research, writing, organizing, the one who was my go-to was Kendall, Kendall, thank you. Thank you all the best. KB, that's what we call her in the office, Kendall Bélail, thank you very much. I also want to thank the permanent observers. Your support has meant a lot for my office with the projects we have been organizing, working very closely with you. Very special thanks to Monsignor, representative of the Holy See. His kindness and his generosity allowed my family and I to have a unique, invaluable experience when we were able to visit the Vatican and to get an audience with His Holiness Pope Francis. For us, that was a major, major event in the life of my family and we will always be very grateful to the Holy See and especially to its representative. Of course, Spain, we've worked with Spain on bilingualism. This is one of the things I always talk about when I go to the member states and I visit institutions of higher learning, especially in the Caribbean and many times also in Central America. When I insist that our people no longer have the luxury of only being able to speak one language, especially in the Caribbean. You know, the mainstay of the economies is tourism. And if we cannot talk to our guests in a language that they understand, that will allow them not only to communicate better and more effectively, but to spend more money. That's the idea, you know, improve the service. So bilingualism is very important. It's not just culturally expansive and inclusive, it makes economic sense. I know several of the Caribbean leaders have been talking about it and I hope that that remains something that the OAS can continue to support the region with. And the same thing goes for Central America. It's no longer possible only to speak Spanish. We need to speak another language for many of the same reasons and because our world is becoming so quickly more integrated. And then we have the other official languages of the organization, just as important. But at least one more, you pick whichever, the one that makes more sense. But we need to keep instilling this in our young people, especially young people. Because once you get to a certain age like me, I have trouble learning a new language at this point in my life. And if I do learn it, the words that I would learn would not be fit for decent company in the dinner table. So I would stay away from that. To my family, people who know me know the importance of family to me. My wife Elvira, my son Anwar, my daughter Kiara and now with their respective partners Manny and Marilyn. Thank you for all the support, thank you for being there. My family has always been my first line of defense and many times the last line of defense as well. And you cannot, you know, take on the responsibility that I have been blessed to have without having that team there, always to rely on them. And now my kids are also advisors that I trust in their own respective fields along with my wife. They mean the world to me. My mother, thank you for many of you who mentioned her. My mother had planned from weeks that she was going to be here today. She lives here in Washington and last night she called me and she was so, so sad that she came down with the flu. And so I asked for the link for the webcast, Gloria sent it to me very quickly. And so I know she's watching from home, thank you. My mother believes in prayer and her silent counsel, her quiet strength, has been a pillar for our family. pilar para nuestra familia siempre. Así que gracias, mamá. Sé que estás viendo. Mi esposa y yo también tenemos una familia extensa. Tenemos familia, bueno, mi lado de la esposa tiene familia en todo el Estados Unidos o muchos estados. Y luego en Belize hay muchos de ellos. Sé que muchos de ellos están viendo y así, muchas gracias por tu apoyo. Tenemos amigos que viajan de lejos para estar aquí. Quiero que sepan que tremendamente valoro que estás uniendo a nosotros hoy. Es un momento importante en mi vida. No sabía que podía sentir este toque. No sabía que podía ponerse nervioso después de hablar tanto, tanto con el Consejo Permanente como con otras audiencias, pero estoy nervioso y es nuevo para mí, pero también el nuevo etapa de mi vida será nueva para mí, donde sea que el buen Señor me guíe también. A los más amplios personal de la Secretaría, todos, mi conductor que veo, es el primer rostro de la OAS que veo en la mañana cuando me levanto. Y muchas veces el primero que veo en el oficio es Smithsonian, quien hace la limpieza y los guardias y todos los demás que han sido tan apoyados, ya sabes, personas que han salido de su camino, para ser no solo respetuosos, sino realmente ayudar, sacar su peso, mostrar que pertenecer a esta organización significa algo para ellos. Realmente aprecio ese nivel de propiedad y compromiso. Valorizo tremendamente todo el apoyo que has ofrecido a mí durante este periodo de tiempo. Si es que me estoy olvidando de alguien, no es intencional, los traductores, toda la gente de la Secretaría General, amigos, colaboradores, personas de sociedad civil, veo varios amigos acá de la sociedad civil y, por supuesto, toda la Secretaría General realmente valoro el apoyo, el compromiso y es orgullo de pertenecer a la OAS. El secretario general me mencionó anteriormente que una vez que eres OAS, siempre eres OAS. Siento eso, SG, y sé que siempre seré parte de esta familia y espero que usteda sepa que siempre puede continuar contando en mí. La última palabra, tremenda gratitud y gracias a los estados miembros, como dije, por tu apoyo, por tu confianza, por tu consejo, porque aprendí mucho de ustedes. Siempre he creído profundo que nadie tiene todas las respuestas, no importa cuán inteligente creas que eres. Así que hay tan mucha valor en escuchar como hay en compartir, compartir conocimientos, compartir experiencia y compartir guía. Así que he aprendido mucho de tantos de ustedes, probablemente ni siquiera lo realicen. Así que quiero agradecerles desde el fondo de mi corazón por todo eso. Y quiero terminar de la forma en que empecé. Quiero dar gracias al Señor. Y también quiero invocar su nombre y pedirle que continúe a proteger nuestra Organización de Estados Americanos y pido que el Señor siga cuidando a todos nosotros y a la gente de las Américas a la que servimos. Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias.